Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the March 6, 2017 regular meeting of the Milford Board of Aldermen. Please join me as we salute our flag. Madam Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Alderman Anderson?
President.
Alderman Bevan?
Here.
Alderman Beer?
Excuse me, Madam Secretary, Alderman Beer is excused tonight.
Thank you. Alderman Casey?
Here.
Alderman Gorman?
Here.
Alderman Genitasio?
Here.
Alderman Golden?
Here.
Alderman Grant?
Here.
Alderman Hardiman?
Here.
Alderman Shaw?
Here.
Alderman Smith?
Here.
Alderman Veccharelli?
Here.
Alderman Vitale? Twelve present, Mr. Chairman.
Twelve present, we do have a quorum. At this time, the mayor has a presentation. Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tonight, we are here to recognize a lot of good that is happening throughout the small city with a big heart. Tonight, we are celebrating heroism, we're celebrating service to the public, and we are celebrating innovation within our city. And I would like to call up a variety of different persons and different groups to the front foyer, but I was going to start tonight with a real, true Milford hero, and I have not seen him come in yet, but is John O'Rourke and his wife, if you could step forward to the podium? Now, ladies and gentlemen, we see movies that talk about heroes, and we hear about heroes in faraway places, but in the city of Milford, we saw what a true hero is. And John, if you could stay up at the podium. I do have an official proclamation on behalf of the city of Milford which reads, "Whereas Sunday, February 5, 2017 was a relatively mild day with a temperature of 41 degrees, John O'Rourke ventured out for what was to be a leisurely walk with his dog on the trails at Mondo Pond. John's walk ended up to be anything but leisurely. And whereas upon John's arrival at Mondo Pond, he saw a group of kids on the ice, and he warned them to be careful. As John turned to leave, he saw one of the boys had ventured further out on the ice, and it had cracked, and the boy had collapsed into the water. And whereas seeing the terrified child floating just above the surface, John grabbed a stick and ventured onto the ice on his stomach, wiggling his way to the boy. As John was pulling the boy out of the frigid water with a stick, he fell into the water as the ice cracked underneath him. John grabbed the boy and managed to shove him onto the ice. With John's instructions, the boy was able to safely get back to shore. And whereas the definition of a hero is a person of distinguished courage or ability admired for his or her brave deeds and noble qualities. As a result of John's selflessness, courageous act, a young boy's life was saved and a tragedy averted." Now therefore, I, Benjamin Blake, Mayor of the city of Milford, on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby deem it an honor and a privilege to extend our congratulations and admiration to you for your bravery which saved a young boy from a near tragic event. We applaud you, and we are very proud of you. Thank you, John. (Applause). And I mentioned that in addition to heroism, we are also celebrating some other things. And I would like to call up two different groups who competed in LEGO FIRST Robotics. The two groups are Team Masterminds and Team Lightspeed.[346.02][346.02](Applause). If the participants and the coaches could come to the front. Well, I got to start with Team Masterminds first, and then make our way to Team Lightspeed. Whereas the theme for LEGO FIRST, for FIRST LEGO League's challenge for 2016 was Animal Allies. Milford LEGO Team Masterminds chose to research and design an enrichment toy to simulate research mice. Masterminds designed and 3D-printed a staircase with a hiding spot under the stairs, a dome tunnel in leaves. After testing all three designs, the staircase proved to be successful. Not only did the mice run up and down the stairs, they hid in the area underneath the stairs. And whereas Masterminds designed, built, and programmed a robot to go through various missions. The team chose to put its robot through the rigors of a shared mission with a competitive team. And whereas Masterminds participated at the Backyard Blizzard qualifying tournament held in November of 2016. The team placed first overall in robot performance, highest robot game score. First for the project research and second overall runner-up champion award. Masterminds then went on to the state championship where they received the Mechanical Design Award and placed 10th in the robot game. And whereas Masterminds embraced the FIRST LEGO League core values by encouraging friendly competition and helping one another through teamwork. And whereas Masterminds team comprised of members assembled a winning combination through hard work, dedication, and enthusiasm, the city of Milford is very proud of you and very proud that you represent our community so well. And now on to Team Lightspeed. Whereas Dean Kamen, founder of FIRST, for inspiration and recognition of science and technology, and Kirk Kristanison, owner of LEGO Group, created FIRST LEGO in 1998. And whereas the 2016-2017 Milford FIRST LEGO League Team Lightspeed demonstrated the FIRST LEGO League core values to honor the spirit of friendly competition, display gracious professionalism and cooperation in everything they do, to work as a team, to find solutions, and share their experiences with others. Lightspeed designed, built, programmed, and endlessly tested a LEGO robot to complete assigned tasks. They explored topics within the assigned category of animal allies, and in conjunction with Connecticut's Beardsley Zoo, they researched challenges faced by parrots in captivity. The team invented Paratice as a solution to ensure caged birds receive proper enrichment activities and treats without becoming too dependent on human interaction. Lightspeed participated in the FIRST LEGO League qualifying event in November of 2016 where they placed first for robot design and placed first for the team award in robotic performance. They received a golden ticket to compete in the state championships in December 2016 where they went on to win outstanding teamwork award, as well as earning the overall second place championship award in the Connecticut State Championship. The team's accomplishments earned them an invitation to the U.S. Open Championships to be held in the spring of 2017. Lightspeed comprised of members from the Milford Public Schools enrichment program and coaches assembled a winning combination through hard work, dedication, and enthusiasm. The city of Milford is proud that you will be representing us in the United States open competition. And certainly not least, the last group that I would like to recognize have been so well behaved, especially given the late hour and the fact that it is getting to be bedtime for a lot of the folks here, myself included. But I would like to next call up the Girl Scouts and Daisies and Brownies of the city of Milford to help us celebrate Girl Scout Week.[731.13][731.13](Applause).
Mr. Mayor?
Hey, Jim.
We'd like to know if some gifts have been given, Girl Scouts?
You know, I'm going to have to share these.
Some other things here, too.
Thank you.
Feel free to share them. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Thank you, guys. Yeah, why don't we assemble around the horn here? Thank you, guys, for coming. Thank you, guys. We're going to have to make you sit around the horn.
Whereas March 12, 2017 marks the 105th anniversary of the Girl Scouts of the United States of America, which began in 1912 when Savannah, Georgia native Julie Gorinlaw gathered 18 girls to provide them the opportunity to develop physically, mentally, and spiritually. And whereas throughout its long and distinguished history, Girl Scouting has helped build millions of girls and women of courage, confidence, and character who act to make the world a better place. And whereas Girl Scouting's core values of high ideals, patriotism, respect for self and others, and community service permeate its traditional and innovative programs. And whereas core programs around environmental stewardship, anti-bullying techniques, science, technology, engineering, and math, and healthy living help girls develop a solid foundation in leadership. And whereas over the course of their lives, the lessons learned in Girl Scouting will help the girls contribute more to their families and communities, as well as the nation's workforce and leadership. Now therefore, I, Benjamin Blake, Mayor of the city of Milford, on behalf of all the citizens of Milford, do hereby deem it an honor and a pleasure to proclaim the week of March 12 through March 18, 2017 as Girl Scout Week in the city of Milford. Ladies and gentlemen, how about another round of applause for our Girl Scouts?[953.44][953.44](Applause). And Mr. Chairman, if we could stand in recess for a minute or two while the auditorium clears.
We're going to take a five-minute recess until the auditorium clears out. The next portion of the meeting is devoted to public comment. Statements are limited to the legislative function of the Board of Aldermen. The time limit granted to each speaker shall be three minutes. Residents, taxpayers, and electors may address the board at this time. The board encourages speakers not to express derogatory, insensitive, or offensive statements, or to engage in personal attacks against individuals. In order to allow everyone an opportunity to speak, I'd ask that everyone please limit their comments to three minutes. Anyone wishing to address the board can do so at this time. Seeing we have no speakers, Alderman Veccharelli, agenda item number three, consideration of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular minutes of the Board of Aldermen held on February 6, 2017.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, agenda item number four. I'd like to remind everyone that St. Patrick's Day Parade is this Saturday, run by none other but our Alderman, Mr. Hardiman. Touchoff, he tells me, is at 1:00 PM. He'd like everyone to join the line of march at 12 noon. Hopefully, the weather will be in his favor and everyone participating. Open up under Agenda Item Number Seven. We do not have any unfinished business. Move on to new business.
Mayor's Report, six.
Chairman's Report. Mayor's Report is right after Chairman's Report. Number six, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I will keep it quick this evening. I know that there was a lot of recognitions at the beginning of the meeting, so I respectfully request your consideration and action on those items listed on the agenda, 8A through 8F. If you have any questions that come up through the pendency of the meeting, please do not hesitate to ask. With that, I'll wish everybody a very happy St. Patrick's Day.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving on to new business, Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item Number 8A.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the appointment of Megan Sloan, 15 Dogwood Place, as a member of the Flood and Erosion Control Board to fill vacancy of 12/31/21. 12/31/21, thank you.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8B.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the appointment of Ed Beatty, 194 Sentinel Drive, as an advisory board member to the Transit District to fill the vacant position termed to expire 12/31/18.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. At this time, I don't think Mr. Beatty is in our audience. Neither one is here tonight, I have been informed. So we'll move on to Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8C.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the city of Milford to accept the attached Emergency Management Performance Grant from the Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, and to authorize the mayor, the fire chief, the finance director, and/or the city attorney's office to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents, to effectuate said grant.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Bevan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Mayor Blake, please. The amount of this grant is for approximately $53,000, which $26,000 is federal funding, and another 26 is sub-grantee match. Can you tell us who the sub-grantee match is, or what that is, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Alderman Bevan. This is a matching grant. However, the city who is the sub-grantee can match in in-kind services through the emergency management work that we already do as a city, that our fire department and other emergency management folks already engage in. We track that. The hourly rate that we put in is then included in the paperwork and included in the grant application, and that satisfies the city's obligation. So the state does give us approximately $26,000 in funding. Our obligation is satisfied through the emergency management work that we already do through in-kind services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8D.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the city of Milford to accept the attached distracted driving high-visibility enforcement grant, and to authorize the mayor, the police chief, finance director, and/or city attorney's office to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents to effectuate said grant.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Casey?
Thank you. Through you, I see a representative from the police department here, if you can just have a quick question.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Board of Aldermen.
Through you. I'm just curious, I don't know if you know, but with the Bluetooth and more hands-free devices, is the trend, people getting the message, is it going down, distracted driving, or is it the same, or getting worse, if you know, in the state or Milford or?
Sadly, I have to say that it really hasn't had much impact. Technology is not being used. People find it very convenient to find ways to handle it while they're driving, and, you know, I don't think that all the media attention and previous efforts have really impacted it enough. A lot more work has to be done.
Still being done, and people haven't really got the message. So still being done, and people really haven't gotten overall the message, is that?
No. My own personal experience, I had an opportunity to work a couple of the assignments last year, and I could tell you an anecdotal story where one lady had a beautiful, high-end BMW, and while I was writing the ticket, she actually paired her phone and said that was the justification, I needed to do it. And she thanked me. Did walk away with the ticket, but she was, you know, I mean, the technology's there, and I use it myself, and it's really not that hard. A lot of cars are coming with that technology now built in, and it just takes a little pairing, and that was it. But it's very interesting to see how much texting and talking and the pizza, you know, speakerphone, it's, you just can't, you can't do that. It's, you can tell the driver is doing it by just the way they're driving.
Okay, I appreciate you. You're welcome for that. Thank you.
Alderman Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. So it's a shame to hear that people are still driving distracted, but that's something that all of us do still know. We had this grant and this program last year. Could you give us some of the highlights and the benefits, some of the good that came out of it?
From what I understand, well, it's, the state gets this money, federal money, because the, at a federal level, the studies have shown that this is a dangerous thing to be doing while a person's driving, and they say that the studies have shown it's actually more unsafe than a DWI. So we started focusing on this. The state has been increasing the fines, and the initial part of the law was, let's educate our citizens and, you know, give them the opportunity to buy a Bluetooth, and then excuse the ticket. I have had conversations with the person up at DOT, and they're trying, they do have a representative in the legislative and in the courts to, you know, kind of advocate for, you know, a little stricter handling of the matters that do go to court, and that remains to be seen how effective that project. For the grant itself, the city is, I'll say, a second-tier member. There's a bunch of other areas. It's based on statistics, accidents, and studies that the state has put together. So if another agency in the first tier is not interested or doesn't respond, because it is a lot of work to put it together and staff it and, you know, actually do the work to comply with the grant requirements. If that first-tier group doesn't get it, then we're one of the first ones to get asked. So with last year, the way it works is there's four weeks in July, excuse me, April, and two-thirds of the grant money is spent during that timeframe, and then there's another two weeks in August. I'm not exactly sure why they picked those timeframes. It makes it really hard to do that and get the reimbursement requests in before the end of the fiscal year, so we can get our reimbursement and benefit from that. The results, we're going to try something a little bit different, because quite frankly, I looked at the results last year, and there were a lot of stops made, slight decline from the year before, but there was also a lot of assignments that didn't get picked. There's a lot of construction jobs, and, you know, guys are getting a lot of extra work. This supplements what the city efforts do, you know, we do for safety. I think it's a worthwhile program, so we're going to try a little different this year. We're actually going to take some guys, put them in teams, and give them the opportunity to work longer hours at it. Might be a few less days, shift the days around in the scheduling, still complying with the grant requirements, and that way, we can get people who are really focused and really dedicated to this effort. I'm hoping to get a good group of guys, and then we'll take them for their regular assignments and backfill their assignments with the money which is allowable under the grant.
That's definitely excellent to hear, and, you know, we do know that this grant is focused on distracted driving. Another big issue that could be great, if it could be incorporated into it, is, you know, people not coming to a complete stop at a stop sign or red light, and maybe that's something that could be just added in, you know, because they're probably distracted as well.
I actually, I'm in charge of the administrative division, which includes the traffic officers, and they're doing a lot of other work every day. If a crossing guard doesn't show up and we need, they're the ones that go out and fill that slot in the morning and the afternoon. But I did tell them that now that the weather's breaking a little bit, we're going to start doing a little bit more enforcement. You know, they can't do it five days a week, I wish we could, but we're definitely going to step that up and focus on problems just like that. We don't want to be, we want to be the city that people know, hey, when you go there, you got to drive good, because, you know, they're looking for you. And we had that reputation, and, you know, it's a little bit harder now, you know, and we have a lot of younger, less experienced guys, so we're going to, we're going to focus on that. I hope to use those traffic officers working in conjunction with some of the guys working this grant. this grant to kind of start that process a little bit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. In terms of demographics, what are you noticing when you're pulling over people? Is it mainly young, or is it older people, or it just kind of runs across the board?
It runs the gamut. Young, old, you know, economic, it's over the whole spectrum. You know, you'd think it was just younger people, and it's not. There's everybody that's got a phone and is hooked to that technology, and they're just doing this. Every light, young, old, male, female, you know, doesn't matter. I'm seeing everything.
Alderman Ginatazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Good evening. I just have a question in regards to accidents. It really doesn't pertain to the enforcement part of this, but when a police officer responds to an accident based on the technology today, is there a way that the police officer is trained to possibly decipher if the accident was caused by distracted driving? Through texting or being on a phone? I know somebody's not going to say, oh, I wasn't paying attention, I was on my phone, obviously. But is there a mechanism in place?
You would be surprised that a good officer with some interview skills could get a statement like that from the driver. I'm sure two or three days later, his attorney will tell him he made a big mistake, but that's pretty much the only way to do that at a accident scene. The advent and the protocol for getting into a person's phone has been getting stricter and stricter and stricter, and short of consent or a search warrant, we're not really entitled, because people aren't just putting their phone records in there. There's a lot of other things that are in there, and the courts are kind of siding with the member, you know, the owner of that phone, that there's an expectation of privacy there. So, you know, the days like, hey, show me your phone, let me see, and we, you can't do that anymore. Not without consent or a warrant. And on the side of the road, that's not the place or time for that. A more serious accident, that would probably be one of the things we could do. But that would be a prolonged investigation, a little bit more in-depth. We've been fortunate, you've read, Lower Fairfield County, there's been accidents where somebody's been on the phone or texting, and, you know, they hit the jogger or something, and we've been very fortunate not to have that, and we want to make sure that we don't have one of those if we can. And efforts like this is one of the ways we want to do it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item Eight E.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the Public Works Department to enter in to the attached work-based learning program with Platt Vocational Technical High School and to authorize the mayor, the public works director, and the city attorney to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents, to effectuate said program.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I have a couple of questions on this, but before I start, I'd just like to applaud Platt for being creative enough to get these kids into a program, with a hands-on program to that enhance their skills for their career choice. So they're doing a great job, and I think it's a model for other people to follow also, so that's a great thing. The other thing is, how many kids are gonna be involved, number one? Is it just, and I know they have an IT program, technology too, is it just, is it gonna just, and I see it's just gonna be Public Works, but is there other, are there other kids that are gonna be getting into the IT department, or, and how does that affect the contractual agreement between workers and who's supervising and that kind of thing? Lots of questions.
So, Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Vitale. Again, I'd just like to echo your sentiment, Platt is doing a fantastic job, you know, especially in the trade schools. They, you know, are above and beyond any of the others in the state of Connecticut. I also have to give kudos to our public works director, as well as two of the foremen, our highways, our parks foreman and our garage foreman who stepped up. I know that our parks foreman was a former graduate of Platt Tech, and they actually went to the schools and coordinated with some of the teachers about this program. You asked Alderman Vitale about the specific numbers. This agreement allows us the ability to, you know, have new students as part of this program, you know, periodically, so that this is a blanket umbrella. Normally, these kind of agreements do not go in front of your board. The reason why our city attorney's department had asked that we have you bless it, one is because it's a very cool program, but two, the city does have a small amount of liability associated with the workers' comp. These students will be working not just in, you know, IT, actually, the garage is one of the places that we envision these students to work at, at our, you know, auto shop and our garage. So they're, they will fall under the City of Milford's workers' compensation policy, so that there is liability if, God forbid, anyone did get hurt. And that's why you folks are going to be approving this program that we're doing. But, you know, the rewards for both the City of Milford and for the students at Platt Tech, I think, are gonna be huge. It's a great learning experience for the kids, and, you know, the city will get services while these students learn new trades in the real world.
Thank you. Will it just be part of that program, so all the kids, as freshman Southwest juniors, or will the group of kids coming in for X amount of days, weeks? Do you have any of that information?
Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Vitale. If you look at the work-based learning program documents, part of the background materials, there's, I believe it's open to, or available to juniors and seniors, and there's a grade point average that they must maintain. And depending on the student's age, it dictates the ceiling of the number of hours per week that the student can participate, i.e. work, in the program, because they don't want to have the younger kids missing too much classroom time. But it's also, in terms of participants, that's dictated by the department head, not the city, but at the school, by the, whatever program they're in at the technical school, and the principal make the determination who's eligible. And then it's up to the city to work with Platt Tech in terms of placement.
I saw that, you know, I saw the basic criteria, but what I'm wondering is how many kids are we able to handle? So that, is there a number, is there a cutoff? In other words, Public Works might say, you know, garage and parks can only handle, we can only have fifteen, twenty guys.
I believe it's a relatively new program in terms of Platt and the city. I know, this is the first time I've seen the document, and the first thing I ask is who covers them for workers' comp, because the city is self-insured. And right there in the agreement, that the city must provide workers' comp coverage, and that's why I recommend that the mayor bring it before this board, so you'd understand that potential risk, if you will.
But again, we don't know numbers.
No numbers.
Mr. Chair, our public works director is here, who, he is working with Platt Tech to launch this program, to kick off this program really for the first time, to talk a little bit about his vision and the vision of the teachers of Platt Tech, and actually his foremen, who have also been instrumental in getting this program going.
Yes, thank you. So it's really a beginning program. So Alderman Vitale, to say how many people, we don't know. Right now, we're gonna start out with one person in the garage and see where it involves to. When we sat down with, as the mayor was explaining, our two foremans, Tom Hunt and Corey Venna, we talked about, you know, kids don't understand the trade part of it, and we think it's a natural partnership with a local school, with what Platt does. And we've also talked with Sly Mora about bringing some people in for the mechanical part of it, for the buildings and things like that. It could be one, it could be five. I don't envision it more than that, and it's gonna be really an internship where they're gonna work alongside, but more observe. We look at the garage as a person that will do some greasing, you know, the beginning stages, maybe change some oils, and then we'll see where it goes. And accordingly, it's a great experience for these kids. A lot of them don't have any practical experience except what's in the shop. So I think it's a good win for the city and for the employees and, or for the kids. But it also gives us an opportunity, we might find a person that has really a good skillset, and, you know, that's a way to, you know, when you're interviewing people, it's very hard to interview for an hour and get a great employee, but you could see somebody working over a few months and say, hey, that might be a kid that when he comes back to us, we know who he is.
So the onus will be on Platt to choose that individual, those individuals that work in Milford, and then you will create, the program obviously will be created, but it's a fantastic opportunity for these kids. So I just hope it's successful. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, I mean, most people, if you look at the trades, for every, for every eight people that are retiring right now across the boards in the trades, plumbing, heating, electric, you know, HVAC, only one person's going into the trades, you know. So it's an interesting, you know, demographic, how it's working. So there's a real demand, and I think Platt offers a lot of that. And it's taken us a while, we've talked about this for probably a year, about how do we get people in. And as someone said, you know, working alongside of our guys, so that they can actually grasp the real-life experience of working in a shop.
Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To Chris. Part of our packet, it does say, it has a one-line item on wages, paid to the student shall be not less than the Connecticut minimum wage. Do you have any idea what you'll be paying these students?
I'm sorry, what?
How much will you be paying these students?
The minimum wage, I believe, is ten-ten right now.
Yeah, but that's the minimum. Is that what you're gonna be paying them?
That's what I anticipate, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chris. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item Eight F.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached, for Taylor Technologies' software as a service agreement and to authorize the mayor and the city attorney and the finance director to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents, to effectuate said
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. There is no other new business? Moving on to budget memo transfers. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item Number Ten A.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the budget memo transfers, number three, and number four, funds, ten and twelve, FY seventeen.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Eleven, refunds. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the refunds in the amount of twenty-one thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars and eight cents.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Twelve, reports of standing committees. Are there any reports of any standing committees? Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, tonight, we had a Public Safety and Welfare Committee meeting in regards to sidewalk at Fifty Florence Ave., and we upheld the appeal.
Thank you, Alderman Veccharelli. Is there any more standing committee reports? Seeing none, and we move on to Item Number Thirteen, special committee reports. Any special committee reports? Seeing none. Open up, they're under Agenda Item Number Fourteen, the next item on the agenda, the executive session. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss fourteen A, discussion of pending litigation Edgar Crespo versus the City of Milford. Item fourteen B, consideration of collective bargaining agreement between the City of Milford and Local Nine Four Four International Association of Firefighters. Joining us in executive session for Item fourteen A and fourteen B will be the mayor and city attorney, John Bertram. For Item fourteen B, the fire chief, Doug Edo, and HR Director Barnes will also join. Is there a motion?
And, Mr. Chairman, for the record also, Assistant Chief Baker as well for Item fourteen B.
Assistant, Assistant Chief Baker will join us in Item Number fourteen B. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're, we're back in session.
Mr. Chairman, in regards to fourteen A, the pending litigation between Edgar Crespo versus the City of Milford, I make a motion to authorize a settlement in accordance with the recommendations of the city attorney, as discussed in executive session.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Hardeman. Fourteen B.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve consideration of the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Milford and Local Nine Four Four International Association of Firefighters, AFV, CIO, as discussed in executive session.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to excuse myself from the vote as a retired member of the Milford Fire Department.
So moved, Alderman Veccharelli. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Before we adjourn, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Alderman.
I'd like everybody to know, we're going into our twenty-seventh year on the St. Patrick's Day Parade. You are all invited to come out and march with Mel Mole from the chamber, who was our grand marshal, and our Ms. Emalau, she's a junior at, what? Hugo, Halleen Hugo. So come on out, we'll have a good time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Hardeman. All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.